Again, I'm sure that's why all of you are here to listen to our candidates for District 10, City Council seat. So the way this will work is I will give both Paul and Adam about 10 minutes, if they need 10 minutes, to talk about their plans for the district if they're elected. And then after that, we'll kind of go into a Q and A session. I've got some questions that I'll ask both candidates. Each candidate will answer, and then they'll alternate who answers first. During that process, if you do have a question that you'd like to be considered, again, please give it to Sean. Sean will kind of filter through those and give me some. And if we have time after those questions, then we'll try and answer some as many as we can. All right? So Paul, I think you're up first.
Sure. Do I need that, or is such I'm mic'd up?
Scott, is it, can he use this mic as well?
Sure.
Or do you just?
Sure, those mics probably come from the candidates.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Paul Reyes, and thank you all for having me. I do have to excuse myself. I think like Susan, or I think it's more that Great Wolf Lodge finally caught up with me two weekends in a row. I did get one weekend off, but something, I caught something out there. And it's, it's, it's gonna be, I do have to apologize because I've been saving my voice all day for this, so let's see how it works out. But first, it's, I think this is the first time I've been back since the last association meeting that my wife and I served on. We were fortunate enough when we moved, first moved from Austin to Lake Islands. We served on the board. I see Dana, I see Billy in the back. And Susan, I think you're doing a much better job with your minutes. Somehow, I'm gonna say I misplaced them, but I did lose a whole book of minutes once, and Susan's much, much better than I was. But the great thing about this association is really the history of it, and then how much it has done for the neighborhood. I was actually thinking yesterday back to with Pat O'Shea, and then I had the privilege to serve with Kathy Stewart, and to see where it's come from then. And it's always, always moving, moving ahead, and it's a, it's a pleasure to be back. Claire and I, we're on our third neighborhood. I'm a Glenn for Punishment for moving. We've lived in, we first were here in White Rock Valley, then we moved to Town Creek, and now we're on the L Streets. We've just thoroughly enjoyed being part of the Lake Islands community. Just a little bit of background, because I know we're gonna get to some questions, but I just wanted to touch on a few points. I first came into contact with Lake Islands when I started working for John Corona in 2002. So from 2002 to 2005, I worked for the district. It was, it was a pleasure. I got to work on about 100, 100 different pieces of legislation that were mostly economically driven, and then affected Lake Islands and Dallas. And those range from what was actually the moving of PTs. We worked on that sexually-oriented business piece of legislation where you weren't allowed to sell liquor or alcohol in a, in a dry area. It was successful. I also had the opportunity to work on what is now the beautiful bridge on Northwest Highway, working with Tech Scott, and that was quite a process. And I will tell you, one of the wonderful things about Lake Islands is how involved everyone was, and then the willingness to eventually come to a compromise. Because I think everyone in the room remembers, it was not an easy process, but it was a great process. And I think we should all be very proud of what we have on Northwest Highway. It's beautiful. I'm trying to think, some of the other pieces of legislation was also to protect then our local businesses. One of the pieces had to do with, we had an insurance company get into the auto body repair industry, and they would steer those clients. And fortunately, with the support of the local businesses here in Lake Islands, we were able to change that and really beef up those anti-steering statutes. In 2005, well, I've been fortunate. I've worked for the same person for, since 2002, so we're going on 13 years. In 2005, I had the opportunity to move to Dallas. There was no question in my mind, Claire and I, we were going to move to Lake Islands. We'd become, we learned a lot about the community when we were, when we were in Austin. We fell in love with the community, and so we bought our first home here. It was at Shoreview in Aldelia. The great part about it is, I don't think we could afford that same home. You know, it's been great to watch, watch the neighborhood grow. It's been great to watch Lake Islands grow. But what I do now is, we, I work at the North America's largest residential property management firm. We don't do apartments. We're, it's homeowners, it's community associations. I was actually thinking back again of Billy, and now I know it's moving on to National Night Out. I was actually jealous, because we couldn't even do that where we had to. Just the amount of participation as the community, it's reflected in what we do day to day, how we treat each other, and that was just a great example. Again, I think maybe we should hire Billy to do our National Night Out. It was, it was something that we would, we would aspire to as a company. But where we are now today is, we're at 9,000 employees. We have about 1,000 employees in the Dallas area. We manage 9,000 associations. We've got 1.7 million homeowners, or, I'm sorry, 1.7 million homes under management. And so that's about, just approximation, about 4 million different homeowners. So suffice it to say, I get a lot of calls from some irritated people. We're a service industry. We work on communities. That's what we do every day. We understand how important the, your, the community is. We work, I found the opportunity now to work with over 100 municipalities. Unfortunately, I will say, one of the more difficult has been Dallas. And I'd, and I like to take that, that leads into some of the points I just wanted to cover. Our difficulty, and this is just from our experience, is that we try to, we're in a period of consolidation, so we're taking positions from around the country. We made the decision that we're gonna do this in Dallas. And we were trying, we actually worked a little over a year to relocate these people, and that's gonna be about 700 to 800 people, to the Park Lane facility. And when working with the city, we were told we were gonna be able to have parking to accommodate it. I'd like to say that everyone uses DART, but I think we all realize in the room that not everyone's gonna use DART, and they need a parking space. We were looking to take down 90,000 square feet. We were actually gonna relocate our corporate headquarters, which is at Mockingbird and Central. 12 months into it, I guess there was a change of mind, a change of heart, and we didn't get that variance that we were expecting, that we were told to, within a six-week period, because we were forced to. We started looking elsewhere. We actually were trying to buy an adjacent parking lot and thought about shuttling people in. Majority of us are from Dallas, we wanted to stay in Dallas. But unfortunately, just as we've seen with some other companies that have relocated, Richardson came in, and the mayor of Richardson, their council, they worked with us. It took us six weeks, and we also have a $390,000 education grant from Rich &amp; College. There's no reason why we couldn't do that in Dallas. But we've seen it as we go north or in the suburbs. We've seen Plano, they have Toyota. We're seeing State Farm. And to let you know, State Farm has been in touch with us too, because they're looking for the same type of education grants. And those are the issues that we face as far as the city and making things much more simple. It should be easy to do business here. I know it's gonna be an expense, but with that expense should be some simplicity. Actually, while I'm holding this, I was talking to a friend earlier today who does remodels and then also new builds. And so I was taking a look at this. I don't know if you can see it, but I was with him trying to figure out what the, what the permits would be. And I guess the way in Dallas they do it is, there's some sort of chart you have to go to. So between the two of us and about an hour, I still couldn't come up with a number. But in Richardson, it's pretty simple here. There's just one price, and that makes it much easier. It's just easier to do business. As we all know, one of the big issues, not only for this association, but for the other neighborhoods within Lake Islands, is crime. Our resources are stretched. One of the things that I would like to do, and past council members have tried to push this through or to work on it, is to try to find those resources for community policing. It's one of those things that, that I believe works, but it has to be something that we're willing to work on as a community. I'm not quite sure why we haven't been doing that more recently. I know we have the EMP, but again, that's just something, I recognize that the resources, we are strapped, but that is something we should look towards. Because we see the statistics that crime is decreasing. But I'll tell you, when I lived here, unfortunately, our shed got broken into in the back. My lawnmower got stolen. Let's see, we had two cars vandalized. So that was great for the auto body repair facilities, but it wasn't so great for us. When we moved into Town Creek, I had my car, my car stolen from my driveway. So I know the statistics are going down, but I think we all do see, and sometimes maybe, maybe it's too much at times, but we do recognize that we do have to address that problem. My brother, my sister, and I, we are, we're first generation in the U.S. My father immigrated from the Philippines. One of my, now as I get older, you start to appreciate things, was watching my father take his citizenship and pass. We learned, or I'm still learning, it's one of those things where maybe I should've paid a lot more attention to my parents, but hey, you know, it's better late than ever, is that how much opportunity we were given. And I can, again, day to day, I appreciate that. And my, my, my brother, my father, the way they gave back is, they would, to the community, this is recognition for public service, community service, they volunteer their time as physicians, and they give back to the community in that way. I'm pretty sure no one wants me to do that, because I have no idea what I'm doing. But I do understand the value and the importance to give back to the community. I did it while I was at the state, and that was as a paid employee. But since 2005, 2006, it's been as a volunteer, and just like everyone else in this room, we're taking time out to become part of the community. It is important for us, and then now with two children, to give back to the community for public service. I am grateful for the opportunities that have been given to me, and that's what my wife and I, with our two kids, that's what we would like to do and try to for the community. And it would be a privilege for, for me if I was given the opportunity to serve everyone in this community on the city council. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, the board. Thank you, Paul, for being here tonight. I really appreciate this opportunity. I do wanna take pause for just one personal thank you as well. This, this whole campaign thing's not that easy, right? Lots going on, and I have a wonderful partner, and I wanna ask her if you would just stand for a moment, Lacy. This is my wife. I'm thankful she's here, and she's been great through all of this. All right, so I do love this. I've been in public service now for the city of Dallas for almost 10 years. I am, have been a community prosecutor. I was until recently the mayor's chief of staff, and I absolutely love working with communities. And I had a little bit of deja vu as I was driving into the meeting tonight, thinking about the very first neighborhood meeting that I went to as a community prosecutor. We were in Old East Dallas. We went into the room, there was, it was a similar room to this, not quite as many people, sitting around in a horseshoe, and it was a lot of folks that had really given of their lives, their time, their focus, their energy, and everything that you and here are doing to support and benefit their neighborhood. And as I sat and listened, still not knowing much about the city at the time, young attorney, I heard from about four or five different people in the room, the exact same problem. They were talking about one property. It was an apartment complex. It was a situation where there had been drugs and prostitutes and all sorts of nefarious activities going on at that property. And so, you know, I didn't know any better. That night after the meeting, it was dark, but I decided to go by the property. And you see a lot of things after, after dark, right? And we saw a little bit of everything they had described earlier. And so what I did was, I started researching. I had our code officer, we worked for, we worked directly with code compliance at the time, and I had a specifically code officer assigned to me. And we started looking at everything. I talked to neighbors, I talked to the people living there. We found out who the owner was, found the history of the property. And we could see real quickly that it wasn't just that property, there were some other things around in the area. But I went ahead, prepared the legal documentation, we got ready to file the lawsuit, we wrote plenty of citations, and we got the property owner to come in and sit down with us. And once he'd seen how we had prepared that case, he looked at me and he said, "Don't worry about it, I'll take care of the problem." And before my second neighborhood meeting with that particular group, that property owner had razed that apartment complex. It was totally down. And what I learned during that process was several things. But first and foremost, when that community gathered round and celebrated that particular victory, we just started a march. And it was one property, one situation, one illegal business after the other, and we continued to really make progress for that neighborhood. And that's one of the most rewarding things I've, I've been involved with. And I was able to do that for a number of years in community prosecution, until I moved up to be in leadership of that program. And so I became the deputy chief at a time when everything in the city was cutting budgets, and we were really reducing the size of a lot of things because of market forces. And our particular program was growing. And so we went from, at one point in time, three community prosecutors, to I was supervising 17 attorneys and 10 code officers and three community courts. And we continued to invest in the community and work with neighborhood associations across the city. And so it was a time period when I then moved into, just to spare you some of the details, but I moved in, had the mayor come and ask me to come lead his Grow South initiatives for Southern Dallas. And that was an amazing opportunity. We've done so much work in Southern Dallas in bringing economic development to the area, and it's, it's, it's been extremely rewarding to work in a bunch of different areas across the city. And so before I get into some of the specifics of things I want to do here, I really want to summarize why I want to be your council member. I mean, really, for me, it comes down to three main words. It's first, faith, second duty, and third, family. I decided a while back that I was gonna make the decisions I made professionally due to my faith. And every step of the way, as long as I follow that path, it has turned out good. And that's one of the main things I want to do in this situation. I've been blessed to have a number of opportunities to serve, to meet a lot of people, make a lot of relationships, and I want to bring that resources back to our area of the city, back to Lake Islands. Duty, I believe that all of us who have the resources, the skills, the energy, the ability to give and to serve, I think that's what we're supposed to do, and that's what I've chosen to do, and I will continue to do that. And so I feel like it's not just something I want to do, it's, it's my duty to really take the experiences I've been able to have, worked at the state capitol as, for a representative in Austin when I was there. I, again, had the opportunity to serve the city in a number of different positions. Recently, been able to work with all the, all the entities that we have involved with the city to give back. And so I feel like it's my duty to do so. And then family, nothing better than being able to expose your kids to so many different opportunities, learning from every walk of life. When we go out in the neighborhoods, whether it's in the furthest Southern Dallas or right here in our neighborhood in, in Lake Islands, I love having my kids with me, working with people, learning from people. And just every time my boys see me, I want them to see a public servant. And so that's really important to me as we go through this whole process. And then finally, what do we want to do? I think every one of us could pick the top four issues, the top five issues or so that we're dealing with in Lake Islands. And that's really, when I sat down and looked at my strengths and tried to determine, okay, should we, should we take on this venture to serve the community as a council member? I started thinking, what do I want in my council member? I want somebody who has been there, has worked on the, on the level. I want somebody who knows the people that are involved at City Hall. Paul's right, there's some, there's some things and some systems in place that are not efficient. And let me tell you, it takes somebody who knows the inefficiencies to be able to make those things efficient. It takes somebody who has been there, who has seen what's going on in the city. And truthfully, it takes, it's a sense of urgency, okay? I feel like there's a need for many of us, all of us in District 10, to really, to wake up. We have a lot of things that are going well. Our neighborhoods are strong, our crime is reducing, but we're missing out on a lot of opportunities, okay? Drive down, look, drive across the bridge, look at Trinity Groves, look at what's happening down there. If you go further into the Cedars, there's lots of development coming in, and Almo draft houses coming in. Go down to Sylvan 30, and you can start seeing more development in grocery stores and things growing in that area. And just keep going down Lamar and into Bishop Arts and North Oak Cliff. It's time for us to grow Lake Islands, okay? There's so many opportunities for us that we really need to be involved in, and I want to be the one that's helping to do that. So it's, the time is now. One last thing, look, City Hall is an interesting place. I have been blessed, I guess that's the right word, to see the inner workings from the mayor's office. To my knowledge, I'm the first chief of staff of any mayor to be invited into the small group meetings, which is where our city leadership has all the assistant city managers together, and they're talking through every issue that comes up. We've been through budgets. In my time there, we've spent time in numerous task forces, looking at, at education issues, looking at poverty issues, looking at any, any number of things we're really trying to push the, push the ball forward on. And so that's, we, we can't wait for the amount of time it takes somebody from the outside to figure out City Hall to, for in Lake Islands, okay? We have to be moving right away. And I know that's one of the reasons that our current council member, Jerry Allen, is supporting me, because he has seen how long it takes people to form the relationships, to recognize what's going on at City Hall, and to really help move things forward. And I'm, I'm just thankful to have had that opportunity already, and I look forward to continuing to move that forward, but doing it as quickly as we possibly can for all of us in this room. And so I'll close just for one, one more thing, until the questions. I was trying to think of, you get ready to go through a campaign, you start thinking of, all right, what's the, what's the theme? What are you really thinking about? What do you wanna, what role do you want your campaign to play in? I think it's been summed up in a lot of what Richard said about neighborhoods and the strength of neighborhoods. It's, it's a love your neighbor, right? The extent that we can really pay attention and serve one another. I loved walking through some of the streets this past weekend and seeing some of the front doors wide open. That's, that's, that's a neighborhood where we can protect each other to that extent. And so I want to play a role in that. I want to continue to develop strength in neighborhoods. As crime issues come up, I would want somebody that has been there, that has walked the streets with our officers. We do have neighborhood policing. The current sergeant of our NPO department is one of the patrol officers that I worked with on the streets in East Dallas when we were first fighting drug houses and doing night sweeps at 3:00 in the morning, going through some really terrible bars. And so to have the relationships and to be able to call on a first-name basis people that you've worked with for a number of years is incredibly valuable. When we were having a meeting on Friday with the developer of our town center, it was, it's incredibly helpful to have the person discussing the issues that they're having and to know that I can pick up the phone and call the people and have worked with the people, that we need to sit down at the table and negotiate some of these outcomes. So with that, I appreciate your time tonight. I look forward to answering some questions as they come up. Thank you very much.
All right. Hello? Break it down?
Uh-oh.
It was low on battery. Hello? Hello? That was for the people in the back that fell asleep when I was talking. All right, I'm gonna ask both Paul and Adam to come up. So what, I've got a series of questions that, that I'll ask, like I mentioned before, and then Sean's been filtering some questions as well. I think it is important to let you guys know that these candidates were not provided all these questions in advance. So I say that so that we make sure that they were fair. Unlike probably, I don't know, a presidential debate or something like that that we're used to seeing on TV, they, they got all their canned responses and things like that. So first of all, thank you guys for accepting this offer. I'm not sure everyone would, but we certainly appreciate it. And so Paul spoke first.
Sure.
So we'll let Adam address the first question first. And I'd like for you guys to try and keep each answer within two minutes if so, and we'll go from there. So you guys ready? No? Yes? Asleep? Awake? Yes? 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 All right, we're ready. Okay, here we go. The first question is around education. And the question is, both of you have made decisions to enroll your children in schools other than Lake Islands public schools. Can you please elaborate on your decision regarding this matter and explain how you gain the community's trust in our schools without having a child go through the RISD system?
Thank you for the question. So as most of you probably know at this point, our children go to Schofield Christian School here in Lake Islands. We have, over the past years, as, as every father and mother in this room have made decisions, they're in the best interest of our kids. We decided that we needed our kids in other schools than we had options for, and that's, that's what we have done. I'm very thankful for where they are now. It's a great school. We're constantly looking and trying to make those same decisions for our kids. And what, what I have learned is, one of the major focus areas of, of the Grow South initiative that I've worked on so much is strengthening schools. And you do that as a neighborhood, as a community, by surrounding your schools with mentors, with trainers, with volunteers, with people that can get inside the schools. As, as you probably know too, we, as city council, really deal with areas surrounding the schools, not within the walls as much, except with, with every different kind of initiative that we can come up with. And I have worked with, with the ISD schools, we've worked some with RISD schools, but I look forward to really focusing all the time and attention I have on our RISD schools moving forward, with entrepreneurship opportunities, with training opportunities, with international opportunities. It's about the relationships and the organizations, many of which are coming and saying to us in the city, "We want to help schools. We want to help DISD. Oh yeah, we'll help RISD too." But we have to have someone that's really out there pulling and getting as many resources as we possibly can for the schools here.
Are we coming back to education, or is it, as another question?
What's that?
Are we coming back to education as another question? Just another topic?
No, education is the topic.
Okay. I thought school, at school as well.
Yeah.
Claire and I have been parishioners of St. Patrick's since we moved to Lake Islands. We're both Catholic, and we made that decision to send them to St. Pat's. We love being part of the community. St. Pat's has celebrated its 50th anniversary. It's, and we love, and we're just, we're happy we were able to find that school.
Okay, we'll move on to the second question. RISD has and continues to face capacity issues throughout the district. White Rock Elementary was originally intended to be a neighborhood school with an enrollment of around 500 students, but with recent expansion, it now has a capacity of close to 900 students. There have been multiple suggestions on how to address the capacity issues in RISD. So would you like me to give you the options again?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't, don't look at my cheat sheet.
Okay, I won't look, I won't look.
So the options are...
Oh, sure.
The options are moving the sixth grade classes to the junior highs, building or creating a sixth grade center, moving the freshman center to the high school, or building new schools altogether. Or some combination of all of them.
I guess that's the catch-all. What I will, you know, two past council members were, were successful at opening up two new schools. So what is it, Aldelia Creek and then Thurgood Marshall. I think those have worked out extremely well. And then there was another council member that worked on the land for the ninth grade center. So it's an interesting question you ask, because the council member can actually assist in those. Of course, you're gonna follow the direction of the Board of Trustees. We have phenomenal board members here in Lake Islands. We're privileged to have Justin Bono. I know Adam is stepping down, and he's served the community well. But I think I would, again, that's a difficult question, real quick.
Order of priority.
Order of priority. I know Adam is stepping down and he's served the community well. But I think I would, again, it's a difficult question, real quick.
Order of priority.
Order of priority. What I saw successful, because you're talking about now redrawing some of those districts, I would think that I would look towards possibly, if we got to that saturated point with some multifamily housing, I would take a look at opening up some new sites.
New sites?
I'm thankful I'm running for city council and not RISD. Those are tough decisions, right? All these decisions surrounding our schools. And what I would do is, can pull as many community forums as we possibly can together and test the water with the community. What do you want? And I would base my decisions, my recommendations and my movement forward with RISD based on what the community tells me they want. I certainly have thoughts and opinions as we move forward, but I need to know more information about some of these specific options in order to make affirmative recommendation.
So I'm not gonna let you off the hook, Benny. Paul answered the question, I'm gonna ask you to answer the question. In order of priority, what would your recommendation be? Moving the sixth grade class to the junior highs, building or creating a sixth grade center, moving the freshman center to the high school, or building new schools altogether, based on your understanding of the situation today?
Okay, without, I know, right? Maybe I should cheat.
No. This isn't my college accounting class.
So I don't know the bond program funding to know if we have the capacity to build those centers.
If funds were unlimited and you had an option to address?
Unlimited funds, the unlimited fund budget.
What would your recommendation be?
I mean, I think I'd want to look for every option that we have available. If we can, if we can build an additional school and create space for the overflow that allows for the freshman center and other options to remain in place, I think that sounds like the best option.
So, sorry. Just to clarify, so your answer would be to build new schools?
It's not that simple.
I understand. In order of priority, your first priority would be to build new schools versus changing the structure of the sixth grade center or the freshman center, things like that?
Yeah.
Okay. Economic development. It's been more than seven years since ground was broken at the Lake Highlands Town Center and we have yet to see the vision of the town center come to life. Recent reports suggest that one of the biggest holdups for the project are that the developers want to see an open-area town center without a parking garage, whereas the urban design peer review panel is advocating a more urban feel with a parking structure in place. Can you let us know which option you support?
Okay, first I'll support probably the option that will get things moving as quickly as possible. I, like many of you, have been frustrated at the time it has taken to really get things moving. I understand that there's options with our current tenant that many of us hope will be there and they're trying to make decisions in the development to keep that tenant involved moving forward. But the difference in the design, from my understanding, sort of the city design studio that's involved in maintaining the original character of the TIF funding that's required from the TIF board is supporting the urban design, whereas the current developers are intent upon a more suburban box space design. I'm in a position where I support the urban design to the extent, I think honestly, I think there's a way to do both. I think there's an option that it gets us the tenant that we want there and allows us for continued development moving forward. It may take some more time, it may take going back to council to look at changes in the TIF funding option, but I think there's an option, a way to do both.
So I apologize, but just to clarify, if you had an option on an open-area structure or a parking garage structure with an urban feel, which one would you support?
Again, it's gonna be based on what can actually get done. And so I'm gonna make a decision based on that. But if so, right now I'm currently going on the urban design.
Okay. Thank you, Adam.
And by urban design, you mean the initial Prescott? Cause I actually remember when they came here. How long ago is that now?
More than seven years.
Yeah, so I will go with their current approach right now. I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna lose Sprouts, I'll just say who it is. We'll lose them if we don't get something done. And then where are we? We're gonna be in a worse place than we are today. I don't see many issues. It's not the same thing that was promised to us by Prescott, but Prescott is no longer here. I know Cypress is trying. And Cypress keeps on butting into a wall down at city council. And I'm disappointed that our current leadership hasn't done more. Not only have they not done enough, but they don't communicate to us what is going on. So I'll just try to communicate to you what I know. And I may get some of the numbers wrong, cause I can't recall how much the city pitched in initially. But it's my understanding that the two equity holders are gonna be the city and then Cypress. Cypress has put in the vast majority of the funds. They've hit two of their benchmarks for TIF. And then there's a, gosh, we could be sitting at 2040 if nothing moves from now. I mean, I enjoy having Oktoberfest grounds, it's phenomenal. Maybe we could put a Christmas grounds in there. But I'm all for taking the plan as presented back in December, presented to the design board. We need to move forward with it and we need to get something done.
So Paul, can you clarify?
It's the less urban. It's the, yes, it's the current with Sprouts, open parking, there is a walkway. Yeah, I'm for that.
Open air?
Open air.
Okay. It appears that there are more businesses leaving District 10 than there are new startups. The community that is striving for new retail opportunities, especially restaurants, how do you explain the area's inability to keep and attract retail stores and restaurants? And how do you plan on addressing this if you are elected?
I could go on for more than two minutes, but simply, actually it starts with the town center development. If we don't close this deal, I don't know how you incentivize other developers to come in here. I'm just gonna, I don't under, I wouldn't want to come in here if I couldn't get something done. All the money that's been spent, I think it does have the community backing. If we don't get this done, what's that telling the rest of people? What's that telling businesses inside the state, outside of Dallas, if they want to come in? What's that telling people outside of the state that we're trying to attract? We need to get the town center done. And I believe if we're able to get that done, then we've proven as a community that we can support economic growth.
So I agree, you have to get the town center done, but you have to continue to look at the other options too. The Skilman Gateway and the development along Skilman, you have to continue to push every one of our areas of potential development. I think that we are a community that has a focus on innovation and entrepreneurship. I think there's ways to bring pop-up retail locations into the district and to really support some additional small businesses on a wider scale. And then as those successes breed, other opportunities come. And so I think a lot of it is, I mean goodness, in West Dallas, we didn't have even near the resources and the rooftops and the community that we have here locally. We can continue to form relationships with some of the developers and really try to bring more awareness to what we have going on here in Lake Highlands.
Thank you. Switching over to crime. District 10 is one of the more densely populated areas in the city and generally that means higher crime rates. Many residents believe those crime rates are tied to a large number of multifamily complexes in the district. How do you plan on addressing crime in the district and specifically, do you support maintaining, increasing, or decreasing the number of multifamily units in the district?
Alright, so how do we deal with the multifamily density issues? My first option is to really go through and look at every one of the apartment complexes, every one of the multifamily communities in our district and create essentially a scorecard. Let's look at best practices, let's look at what's going on in these particular communities. And there's gonna be some of these that are doing, that are passing, right? There's gonna be some of those that are doing very, very well. And those that are, we need to wrap our arms around, we need to support, we need to help with additional amenities and resources and try to help the kids that are living in those particular complexes to be more successful in school. But there's gonna be some of those complexes that drop to the bottom of the list that are in the fail category. And we need to do everything in our power from the city to make those willing sellers or in certain cases, get new developers to come in and redevelop or knock down those structures and put in some single-family developments. So I'm in favor of reducing the number of multifamily communities, increasing the number of single-family homeowner, homeownership properties and really trying to support those that are living in those multifamily communities where we can.
Thank you, Adam.
What were the options again? Was it decrease, increase, or maintain?
Yes, sir.
Alright. I'm in favor of decreasing. There, and as Adam has pointed out, it has to be done on a case-by-case basis. We've seen the successful redevelopment. We have a couple of projects going on in our community. When you have the, well, it's twofold. I understand the code enforcement part, the part where you go in and you're working with a complex, typically your apartment buildings have anywhere between a 20 to 30-year life cycle. One issue we have is then also, what happens when we put back more apartments? And that's what we have to try to avoid. Cause there's also this other effect is if you bring in some nicer apartments, again, understanding most of these complexes were in that place. So 20 to 30 years from now, we're gonna have those same issues. Also, when you bring in, unfortunately, a landowner, they're just looking at the cash flow and what they can get out of it instead of trying to sell it. We have to come up as a community and be willing to provide those incentives to bring in those people that want to develop single-family homes. So I'm definitely in favor of decreasing, especially when we have certain complexes that cause our public safety, whether it's fire or police, to be stretched. So it's also, you can decrease it, but what do you do afterwards? And that's where the tough part is, is the community coming together, trying to figure out what we're able to do to entice those single-family developments to come in place.
Thank you. It's not as much fun, would you guys agree on something?
Yeah.
Alright, this is somewhat of a long question, but I'll try and get through it. And no, you cannot look at the paper. Home values in White Rock Valley as well as some of the surrounding neighborhoods have skyrocketed over the last 10 years. And with that increase in home values comes an increase in property taxes. It's estimated that there is over $3 million in city taxes alone collected from the White Rock Valley neighborhood. Some residents are concerned that these taxes that are collected are not proportionately reinvested in the neighborhoods that generate the tax revenue. How would you address that concern and would you be an advocate for the redistribution of tax dollars to help support the infrastructure of this neighborhood for increased security measures like additional lighting and increased patrols as well as investments in parks and recreations and even underground power lines?
Yeah, the underground power lines. Aren't they, you're still grandfather, right? I think so. Were you also gonna bring school into the equation?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't quite sure.
This question is focused specifically on?
Just on public safety, the redistribution?
The city taxes that are collected, not the dollars collected for RISD.
Okay. I think we just lost.
Did we lose it?
Did I press, did I break it? I can, I'll try and now we'll definitely lose my voice. So the, oh, is this working? Okay. So it'd be in favor of redistribution of the city tax?
Correct.
And are you talking specifically just for the White Rock Valley?
White Rock Valley is this neighborhood which we're most concerned about, but the point would be the neighborhoods that raise the taxes through their increased property values, are you in favor of keeping some of those dollars in the neighborhood more proportionately than how they're distributed today?
Wow, that's a tough one. And I apologize, I'm just thinking, trying to work through this. If you're gonna re, and you're talking about to use for lighting and?
So with the taxes that are generated from the property values here, those go into a pool, right? And it's not distributed proportionately with the revenue, right? And some are community areas, streets and things like that.
Yeah, actually, I'm trying to think of also commercial, if you're, see, that's why I'm thinking, if it was, if you're operating in a vacuum, yeah, I'd be, I'd be all for if what you're taking, because of the increased property tax, redistributing it within the community. I guess the difficulty I'm having is there are areas where you've got, I'm thinking outside of this area, well, actually, I don't know what the, off of like White Rock Trail, how much that's contributing, the, some of that commercial. I don't have a, I don't have an issue with doing that, to redistribute to those certain areas. I guess I'd just have to get a, I'd have to get a grasp on the mix between the residential and commercial from neighborhood to neighborhood. And I apologize, I, yeah.
I love the idea of keeping tax dollars in the areas where the tax is generated from. It's almost impossible to do, but I would definitely favor that if that's the way to do it.
Thank you. Sean?
Do you have five minutes left?
Yeah, five minutes. Okay. In your opinion, what is the biggest challenge faced by District 10 and the most important way to address it?
I'd say the biggest issue is expediting our economic development. It's tied to so many of the other issues, so I think that's number one. The way to address it is you do improve public safety and the quality of life in our neighborhoods and you get more people involved, you continue to improve and work in our schools. And so it's a, it's a sort of a collaborative cohesive strategy that focuses on, well, we've already talked about some and dealing with some of the multifamily communities, reducing density where possible, supporting and encouraging the residents in multifamily communities where it's appropriate. And that, I think, spurs more momentum, more positive development in our economic development areas.
I believe still the most important thing for the community is public safety. And that will be, that will be tied to economic development. But for me, from what I'm hearing in the community, we've lived in three neighborhoods, it's public safety. I'd like to think that my wife, when she goes, runs, it's talking, funny you're talking about well-lit streets, that when she runs in the morning and the lights aren't well-lit, that she's gonna be safe. I'd like to think that when my four-year-old and six-year-old daughter, as they grow up, they're gonna be safe. And to tie into that, I think one of the ways we get there is through economic development. But for me, it's always gonna be public safety is the most important to me and to the community.
Thank you. So you've each talked about economic development, but there's also a preservation of some of the green space that we have. Many of us moved to the district to be near White Rock Lake and other green spaces. White Rock Lake seems to be under constant assault for development and by the park department itself. Will you protect the lake and other natural spaces against development?
It depends what type of development. Yeah, I think there still is room. I know that prior efforts weren't successful. It's an interesting question because it's not in District 10. So I'd wanna work with the community. So I'd wanna work with the community and not try to speak for District 9, where the lake is. The, yeah, that's one of the, but for us, what's coming up, that would be where the Army Reserve is. And I know that's coming up in the next 12 months, so I'm trying to think of things that, that are gonna affect us right here in the community, and I think that's where we should, right now, that's where our focus should be. Again, if we go back to the lake, that's something to work with the members from District 9. But for me, my concentration would be on what's coming up right now as far as green space, as far as parks, and that would be where the reserve center is right now.
I think the answer is yes, support the green space and protect the green space that we have, encourage additional development, look at our trail system, continue to connect the trails where we can, and give ourselves more opportunities to enjoy the recreation that we have, that many of us moved to this area to experience.
Thank you. This is gonna be the last question, and I think this is an interesting one, 'cause it makes me smile, 'cause I've walked out of the grocery store nowadays in the city of Dallas carrying more than I should. So the question is, what is your position on the Dallas County Bag Program? Would you vote to reverse it, since it does no good?
Yes.
Yes.
I would. I would vote to reverse it.
Okay.
Yes, I would vote to reverse it, and the unintended consequences have been horrible. So if I'm a small business owner and this comes through, I can no longer go to Costco, Sam's Club, of course, I go to Timber Creek to do all of that, but I can't go buy those bags anymore. I now have to order bags that are of a certain thickness, have my name on it, have some sort of other written disclaimer. I'm not quite sure what they were thinking when they came up with this, but it's a horrible, horrible idea. So yes, I'd vote to repeal it.
Since, I think it's good to leave on a good note, where you guys both agree. Again, I wanna take a moment and just thank these candidates. Again, neither Paul nor Adam had the questions in advance, and understand that these questions aren't easy questions, and they might have been a little bit long with, you know, 10 to 12 multiple-choice answers. But I appreciate you guys, appreciate you guys coming here, and thank you.